I call this meeting to order. So since I'm everybody know why I'm wearing a T-shirt, it happens to have Montana State on the back of it. Paul is also wearing one. We give a challenge to the city of Bozeman to wear our garb if our team won. So congratulations to Montana State. Also congratulations to NDSU winning national championship. But I also have to remind NDSU they had one loss, and that was in Brookings. So just so we have a heads up there. Okay. Approval of, oh no, record of council attendance, please.
Mayor and council members, as we are not all in the same room tonight, we do have a couple council members joining us virtually. I'll have to do roll call. So when I call your name, please respond with present. Avery.
You're.
Bacon.
Present.
Brink.
Present.
Collins.
Present.
Neymeyer.
Present.
Tilton Byrne. Wendell. Councilmember Wendell may be a couple minutes late.
Okay, thank you. Next item, approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Still moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, is there any discussion or questions? Please call the roll.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Neymeyer.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Wendell. Avery.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Open forum. Jason Merkley from the hospitals here give us a little bit of a report of the situation we have in Brookings.
Evening, everyone. My name is Jason Merkley. I'm president and CEO of Brookings Health System. I wanted to provide all of you with a brief update and summary of the challenges that we're facing at this time today in the health system. Yesterday's Brookings Register article titled Brace For This Month provided a snapshot of the unprecedented challenges we are facing as a community and as a health system. The article focused on a couple main points that I wanted to take time to reiterate with you this evening. First, COVID. The Department of Health is now stating that approximately 90-plus percent of the cases identified in South Dakota in South Dakota are of the Omicron variant and COVID positivity and transmission rates are out of control within our state and community. I just left the hospital where we had an emergency department full of struggling COVID patients, four of which are being admitted as inpatients as I speak. Up to this point, over the fall and winter months, we have averaged treating approximately three to seven COVID inpatients per day within the hospital. Many, many, many more on a daily basis for outpatient treatment and care. I have a strong suspicion those numbers are going to dramatically increase in the coming days and weeks based upon the trends we are seeing over this past week. To that end, I cannot stress enough that we should take any and all precautions that we can as individuals in this fight to control the spread of this virus. Secondly is capacity and workforce. The article touched base on that. The hospital has been and continues to be bursting at the seams with patients, most of which are very sick with very little or at no times no ability or at times no ability to transfer patients to our tertiary facilities. We can quite honestly, we quite honestly will not be able to sustain this pace and have no reserves left on the bench to replace those in action. Our surge plans are in place, our alternative staffing plans are in place, and our ability to stretch much further is limited. Unfortunately, every other facility is facing the same set of challenges as us with little to no capacity, staffing shortages, and a workforce that is battered, fatigued, and frustrated. We need our community to get healthy and to stay healthy. We will be there for those who need us, but we also need your cooperation and assistance. Lastly, in regards to workforce, I did want to mention my support of the Brookings Scholarship Program and funding that is being proposed tonight. It will be these types of programs that will assist us in replenishing our future Brookings workforce. And Brookings Health System will be following a very similar, more directed and impactful approach to investing in, into and training and educating our youth and those who choose to start their career in Brookings. Thanks. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Of the COVID patients unvaccinated.
Follow the same trend publicly throughout wherever else, 90-plus percent are unvaccinated that are in the hospital. That's, that's very similar to what we're seeing. We're beginning to see more of those folks that are vaccinated, that are probably older in age and maybe, you know, compromised with other, other comorbidities.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jason? Time. Okay. Item five, consent agenda. Oh, is there any other people at public forum that would like to speak? On subject, this is not on the agenda. Oh, by the way, I neglected to say, and I'm sorry, Mr. Walker, there is a sign-up sheet over there, so when you get done, please put your name and address down. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Question for Mr. Merkley about what treatment are you providing for outpatient COVID patients?
We provide, for the most part, it's a monoclonal antibody therapy.
Okay, because I have, I have personal experience from family members who say they are just sent home and told to do nothing but isolate. So that's why I wanted to know, you know, if a person comes in and they just, they're experiencing systems but not physically ill enough to go into, be admitted into the hospital, what are you suggesting they do to them? Are you suggesting they take vitamin D or zinc or any of those other proven supplements that are known to help fight the disease?
There'd be a physician question.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I also have a couple questions. Jeanette Gibbons for Jason. My question, when you talk about vaccinated versus.
Please speak into the mic so that people at home can hear.
My question concerns this discussion about vaccinated versus unvaccinated. I've tried very hard to get some breakout information from health professionals. Sanford puts out the statistics of vaccinated versus unvaccinated. I have gotten as far as a legitimate definition. So the definition of unvaccinated, as I would accept it and would understand it myself without going any further, is somebody who has not taken any of the injections. So that's part one of unvaccinated. Part two of unvaccinated is a person who has had one injection of the Pfizer, and they're still unvaccinated. Part three of the definition is someone who has had two shots of Pfizer or one shot of J&amp;J, but it hasn't been 14 days. Those, all three of those are unvaccinated. I think it's very misleading for the public to be told we have this many vaccinated, this many unvaccinated in the hospital without knowing the exact breakdown of those three categories of unvaccinated. So I would appreciate that. My other question is, did you receive a letter which was written by a group of physicians, experts in the field? The organization is called the World Council for Health, and they have published a cease and desist letter regarding the vaccinations because of the dangers. Did you receive the letter?
I received the letter and put it in the trash box as quickly as I could.
I would accept, I would suggest that you read it or look it up online, and I will help others if they want to find the information. Thank you.
All right, if there's about, I didn't intend to have Jason grilled here tonight. He was here to give us information. I appreciate him coming here. So if anybody else has got another subject to talk about on this forum, I'd appreciate it. If not, we'll move on. All right, item five, consent agenda. Item five is approval of the consent agenda. Is there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Or seeing none? If nobody has any, entertain a motion to approve.
Still moved.
Second.
Any public comment on any item on the consent agenda? Any questions from the council? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Brink.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Neymeyer.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne. Wendell. Avery.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item six, presentations and reports. Anna Shane from SDSU is present. Please come up and give us a report, Anna. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. I share for the SDSU Students Association. In December, S.A. passed Resolution 21-12-R, a resolution advocating for the Board of Regents to change Policy 614 to allow alcohol sales at athletic events. A few days later, at the Board of Regents meeting, which was held on campus, Senator John Sunde and student Brandon Brazil presented their research on this topic and all the information to the board. There's a sense of optimism about where this conversation goes as four out of the six Board of Regents schools, their student senators have passed a nearly identical resolution, and the remaining two may potentially, but I will keep you updated as any information on that unfolds. We have four at-large Senate seat opens, so petitions for those are already out, and we will be having interviews on the 23rd and already have those new senators sworn in by our next meeting. Moving into university updates, I just have one. The COVID-19 response team is monitoring the pandemic alongside its new variant, updating its policies to reflect the CDC's recommendations, still offering testing from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on weekdays and test kits off-hours at the pharmacy, and hosting another vaccine clinic on January 19th from noon to four in the Union. That concludes my report. I'll stand by for any questions.
Thanks, Anna. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, contracts and change orders, we have none this time. Item A, ordinances first reading. Item 8A, introduction and first reading on Ordinance 22-001, Budget Amendment Number One to the 2022 Budget. Paul Bracino, our manager, will review this item for us.
Thank you. Mayor, council members. Brookings has no master plan for economic development. Staff recommends the development of a community-wide plan to further council's strategic plan and efforts. To pay for this endeavor, funds exist within the Economic Development Reserve Fund. The desired master plan would provide a comprehensive review of the current economic development environment and benchmark best practices and strategies compared to peer communities. The process also includes a thorough review of all weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. This is accomplished through collaboration and engagement with our economic development strategic partners. The finalized plan will prioritize community economic development outcomes in both short and long term. Staff estimates the development of such a plan will cost $100,000. Staff does recommend approval.
Thank you, Paul.
Good evening. I'm Yvette BEDC Board. I currently sit on that board, and I just have two comments if I could. One being, just want to make sure that the council is aware of the recent work that the joint governance team has done, specifically BEDC, the chamber, and Visit Brookings to identify that overlap and to make sure that they can alleviate that going forward. My second comment is, I question if it's financially efficient to add city-level strategic planning on top of the strategic planning that BEDC is doing internally and among the other two organizations. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I'm a resident of Brookings and currently serve as president of the Brookings Economic Development Corporation, and I'm happy to join with my board colleague, Yvette Campbell, to speak to the possible plan of developing a community economic development master plan. Recognizing that the BEDC itself is engaged in a strategic planning process of which we're very excited about, and it's the appropriate thing for us to do, we're also in support of an opportunity to build a shared vision, to converge around a shared vision for optimal economic development action and collaboration across all of the assets that the Brookings community, the city of Brookings specifically has, and the wider Brookings area. This is a very, very rich community, a very rich area. And so we will, as, as an organization, we will participate enthusiastically in the master planning consultation process because it's so fundamental that we arrive at a truly convergent shared vision to blend our efforts together for maximum economic development and prosperity in the Brookings area, and we have so much to offer and to bring to that table collectively. And I'd be happy to answer questions at the appropriate time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none. Is there any council questions or comments? Okay, public hearing in action on this item is scheduled for January 25, later on this month. Item nine, public hearing, second, public hearing, second readings, item 9A, second reading and action on Ordinance 21-042, authorizing budget amendment number six to the 2021 budget. Ashley Rentsch, our deputy finance manager, will introduce this item.
This is the second reading of Ordinance 21-042, authorizing budget amendment number six to the 2021. The library received four grants totaling $56,300. This included a $49,000 grant from the Larson Family Foundation to be used for audio equipment and a maker space at the children's activity room, and other grants were $1,800 from the South Dakota Humanities Council, $3,000 from the American Library Association, and $2,500 from Dollar General. Any amounts that were not spent in 2021 will be carried over to the 2022 budget for a future, at a future amendment. No changes have been made to this ordinance since the first reading, and staff recommends approval as presented. I will stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Ashley. Is there any public comment, or entertain a motion to approve, sorry.
Still moved.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing does, nothing from public comment. Does the council have any questions or comments? Do we have any comments from our, our council members that are abroad?
None for me at this time.
Do we have Nick on yet?
He is still not on.
Okay, all right. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Collins.
Aye.
Neymeyer.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 9B, public hearing in action on Resolution 22-005, intent to lease real property at Brookings Airport to Midary Aviation LLC. Charlie Richter, our city engineer, will introduce this item to us.
Good night for a resolution on the city's intent to lease property at the Brookings Airport to Midary Aviation. This land lease is for a proposed hangar on the northeast side of the airport. Picture. The term of the lease will be for five years at the airport's approved lease rate. This hangar will ultimately be leased to SDSU for their aviation program. Engineering recommends this lease.
Thank you, Charlie. Open the public hearing on this item. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Entertain a motion to approve.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any council questions or comments? Holly, do you have any comments or questions?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Neymeyer.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Item 10, other business. Item 10A, action on Resolution 22-007, transferring capital improvement projects sinking fund, funds to the Brookings Public Library Capital Projects 2022 Budget. Eric Grangel, our CFO, and Asia Gustafson, our library director, will review this item.
Resolution seeks approval to transfer $79,590 in funds from the Capital Improvement Project's sinking fund into the Brookings Public Library's 2022 budget. This resolution would support the library in its efforts to provide effective and efficient services to the community in a safe environment by adding security cameras and carded key locks. These components were, were identified as, as needed by a recent safety assessment performed by the department. With that, lastly, I just want to say that this action will not result in any incremental expense to a 2022 budget as it is just a transfer of budgetary authority between accounts. And with that, staff recommends approval as presented. Any questions?
Thank you, Eric. First of all, entertain a motion to approve.
Still moved.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Is there any public, public comment on this item? Seeing none. Does the council have any questions or comments? Holly, do you have any comments or questions?
No, sir.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Tilton Byrne. Tilton Byrne.
I'm sorry, the sound's coming through choppy. If she's calling my name, then my answer is aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Neymeyer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Eric and Ash, Asia. Item 10B, action and resolution on approving, approving the Brookings Scholarship Program funding. Paul Bracino, our city manager, will review this item.
Thank you, mayor. Council was presented with a potential scholarship program. This concept has evolved over the past few months and presented tonight for consideration. It's intended for Brookings County area youth and is estimated to cost $100,000 annually. Five years of support exists within the Brookings Municipal Liquor Store Reserves. If approved, staff recommends committing $80,000 to South Dakota State University Foundation and $20,000 towards Dakota, or South Dakota Tech Colleges. The scholarships will target workforce needs of Brookings area businesses and will identify those through capital collaborations with our partners in Brookings Economic Development Corporation. They will also provide funding for those who may not select SDSU as their four-year college or cannot attain additional education beyond high school. An annual report will be provided to city council from each entity to determine continuation of the program annually. Staff recommends approval of the proposed program. I will note Keith Malum is here to speak further on the administration of the scholarship program of SDSU Foundation if approved.
Thank you, Paul. Entertain a motion to approve.
Still moved.
Second.
All right, is there any public comment on this item?
First of all, I thank you guys for the Lex, and I'm really big on education, so I'm happy you're thinking about that. But I called the Secretary of State's office today and asked them for a definition of whether or not funds can be spent by a city council based on resolution. And they referred me, they sent me a thing from the South Dakota Legislature's Research Council saying, "The word resolution as used as a title shall mean determination, decision, or direction of the governing body of a municipality of a special temporary character of purpose of initiating, affecting, or carrying out administrative duties and functions under the laws." All right? And their comments to me were that in order to have new funding spent, it should be by ordinance for the first and second reading. And I've talked to my friend here, Steve, several times about it, and I can find nowhere that you are authorized by resolution to spend additional money. You have to do it by ordinance.
I can, I can respond to that if you want, mayor.
Either Steve or Paul, I don't care.
Sure.
Yeah.
This is more, more or less correct with general fund, general fund funds. This is from an enterprise fund, so they're, they're committed a little differently, so you can't commit those by resolution. But at the end of the day, the decision before council tonight is to authorize this program. We could always bring back a budget or ordinance or two readings on the next budget amendment, but this would solidify the program to be implemented. The actual scholarships, my assumption is, wouldn't be committed until May, June, July, somewhere around there. So there is time. This is, could be considered as the first step if Steve does further legal review and sees there's an ordinance required. But at the end of the day, it's setting the program up, but from what I understand, and maybe our CFO can help me understand, because this is an enterprise fund, the legalities of it is slightly different.
Well, I tried to look into that, and if you can give me written notice of an enterprise fund being allowed to spend city tax dollars, all right, without ordinance, I'm, like I say, I'm not in favor or opposed to the idea. I'm just saying that as a, as a community, we should be able to have input in your spend.
Correct, and at the end of the day, if, if we find that to be true, an ordinance can still come forward. The resolution as it's written right now authorizes council to create the program. It, it does also note the financing, but if we should find that out, we could also bring forward an additional ordinance in the future as well.
When I read the resolution, it says you can spend the money. If I'm wrong, I'd like to be corrected.
Eric, would you mind commenting further on this?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but could I please ask everyone to speak very closely and directly into the microphone? The sound's coming through a bit choppy tonight, and I've noticed that it really helps if you speak very clearly and directly into the mic.
So, so we did look into that, and let me clarify the difference for the public between an enterprise fund and a general fund. The general fund, we funds our operations for the city, is mainly funded by taxpayers' money. The general fund we funds our operations for the city is mainly funded by taxpayers' money. An enterprise fund such as the liquor store is considered to be a business, so there's no taxpayer money. It generates revenue from the sales and the profit that it makes. With that, it's subject to different budget rules because the expenses are very unpredictable. We can't fix an enterprise fund into saying, "You're only going to pay five hundred thousand dollars in a year" because they could sell anyway from a million to five million, and this is just example. So the expenses are relative to the revenue, and that's why we budget with a targeted amount, but the enterprise funds are ruled by a flexible budget. So, so as Paul stated, this resolution is to approve the program. If council decides to do so, even though we're not legally required to at the moment where we need to disperse the funds to, to the different schools, we can bring a budget amendment.
Thank you, Eric. Steve, do you want to weigh in on this?
I would agree with the summary that Eric provided. The, the city has always been committed to complying with all of the legislative audit requirements. And so we will take Zeno's comments into careful consideration. And if it is, you know, determined that it would be in the public interest to budget a line item for this expenditure, the council can consider such a historically, we have not been required to budget for enterprise or proprietary funds under the, the rules of South Dakota. Getting back to the, to the resolution, I think the resolution does describe the, the project and complies with the South Dakota Secretary of State's requirements for resolution. But it is a two-part process. It's developing the program and then properly expending the funds. So we'll consider the comments that were made, and if it's appropriate to suggest a budget amendment be done, we'll do so.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Hello again, Bradley Walker, Brookings resolution. There's so many things. So what you're trying to say is you already have a half a million dollar surplus or it's going to be taken away. You already have a five hundred thousand dollar liquor store reserve fund set up. Why weren't these funds used previously for other things for the citizens of Brookings? Perhaps maybe the citizen, the city of Brookings employees would like to have a raise since they didn't get one this year. And you want to talk about increasing area income? Well, that would be a way to increase area income. It seems to me that you guys are very creative about ways to keep feeding SDSU money. The SDSU Foundation does not need our support. They are funded by the state. They received over a hundred million dollars in funding from the state. How much are we giving to them already? PAC payments every year. So if there is this reserve, why was, how long has it been in force and why wasn't it used for other things? And what happens if it's depleted? If, if, if there's a reserve, how did it come to be in the first place? Are you overcharging everybody for liquor, the restaurant owners, the citizens who buy hard liquor? Is that how you accumulate this reserve? There's just so many questions that I have on this issue. But the main thing is SDSU does not need any help from the city of Brookings. They have plenty of funding coming in. They have plenty of philanthropic donors, plus the funding that they receive from the state. Again, I oppose this resolution. Thank you for your time.
Paul, would you like to respond to
this? So very inaccurate. The first thing that I will comment is the use of, of the funds in the past, any excess dollars are utilized for the general fund, and those dollars go to things that people love and enjoy in this community. Everything from parks to fire and police. When it comes to the salary increases for this year, as you noted, employees are eligible up to a four percent increase, which was passed by the city council as part of the budget process. Finally, the reserves. The reserves have been put in place for quite some time with the intention of building a new liquor store. Staff recommended here about a year ago not to proceed with building a new liquor store, but staying where we're at. Therefore, that alleviated the need for those reserves, and therefore staff is recommending better use of those reserves for education of students within the Brookings area county. I think that answers most of his, his comments.
All right. Any other public comment, please?
Jeanette Gibbons. And my questions, first of all, I will say also that I am very pro-education. My family, all of my family, my husband, myself, my children, all graduates of SDSU. My husband's still employed there. I'm a former employee of SDSU for many, many years. So I am pro-education. I do echo some of Bradley's concerns about the ties between Brookings and SDSU. And I understand the SDSU dollars that are brought into our community by having the students here. I'm a little bit concerned about scholarship money, and my concerns actually go back to the previous scholarship plan that was offered last fall. And the collaboration that took place between the city and SDSU to promote the vaccinations does not sit well with me. In fact, it did not sit so well with me that I went to the foundation office and withdrew scholarship money that I have committed to that university every year. Now, why did it upset me so much? Because the, the vaccines that were being promoted by the city as well as by SDSU are experimental. So we are encouraging students to take experimental vaccines. We're encouraging the community members to take experimental vaccines. We're encouraging now children down to five years of age. What are the long-term benefits and risks? We do not know. I'll leave it at that.
Is there any other public comment? Please state your name.
More at SDSU and I'm also part of the Student Association. So a couple comments on the opposition that's been discussed, and I appreciate everyone having discussion. First of all, the vaccine is now FDA-approved, so the notion that SDSU
Let's just pretend to the subject here, please.
Yeah, I just want to say that SDSU would not do anything to put our students in danger. I think that notion is a little bit offensive. Anyway, also the notion that the foundation receives a hundred million dollars from the state each year. I don't know how they operate exactly, but that number does not seem correct. And I think that people are losing a lot of sight that this is not something that is meant to help the school. It's meant to help students, and that should be our main focus. So I would encourage you to consider all of the points of view and hopefully to support this because I think if we can continue to help students to be encouraged, encouraged to attend SDSU and students who don't maybe want to go to a four-year program to attend a tech school. I think the more that we work on that, the better the community will continue to be. So please support this. That's, that's my two cents.
Thank you for your comments. Any other?
Since I'm being rebuttal, the vaccines are not FDA-approved. If you take the time to go out to the CDC website, which I have numerous times for many months, the CDC states on a page that talks about emergency use authorization, EUA, which is a familiar term we've all come to know and love over the last two years. All of the vaccines are under emergency use authorization, which means they have been approved, they have been authorized for use, not approved. Authorized does not equal approved. And if you'd like to have a debate on this issue, I brought up the idea before, which was not entertained or received warmly here. Let's have an open forum. Let's bring professionals to the table that present both sides of the issue. We have a one-sided narrative that we've heard for two years. People deserve to hear both sides. They deserve to hear the truth. They deserve to hear facts and make up their own minds.
Thank you for your comments.
If you do pass this resolution, I would it, it didn't have a requirement of staying in Brookings County.
Please speak into the mic so Holly can hear what's going on.
Sorry, Holly. As I said, if you do pass the resolution, and when I read the whole thing, it doesn't appear that you have a requirement that they remain in Brookings County for five years. And that's a very common thing for all kinds of scholarships in this state. And I would encourage you to add that to it to make sure that the money that was spent here in our town is invested in our town.
Right. And Zeno, just so you know, we, we and that was one of the stipulations, but this is a pilot program that we're going to fine tune as we get it going. We have Keith Malum here a little bit. He can kind of explain some of that, but we wanted to give it an opportunity. It is based for Brookings County students. It's not just for Brookings School District.
Like I say, it's just
And so it's, it's more to, to help our community, help our children, get a good start. It's not necessarily just to benefit SDSU like a comment was made.
I'm not talking that way.
I understand, I understand.
You know, that if you're going to do it, it's money that's spent by people in Volga, Brookings, all over the place. They should be benefiting from it, is all.
Was public comment? Is there any, any council questions or comments? Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So far contacted me. I've heard nothing but negative thoughts. Kind of, kind of what you heard here tonight from a couple of the folks that have talked, but a lot more. So do we, should we have this criteria figured out before we pass this? The, you know, the how to pay it back or do they have to pay it back? I know there's a number of different things that were talked about that weren't put down, but shouldn't this be something that we should have figured out before we move forward on it? I have more to say if anybody wants to answer that.
I, I know in, in through conversations that have been had over the past three months that the administration of clawbacks, things of that nature would be so overburdened some that it's not worth having the program. When you look at a college student receiving this scholarship, it could be anywhere, you know, a thousand to five thousand dollars that the cost administer that would be overburdened some that it's probably more beneficial to work with people like Brookings Economic Development Corporation to identify the workforce needs in the Brookings area and try to attain that workforce through a proactive approach rather than having clawbacks and things of that nature.
Okay. So probably all tired of me talking about debt, but I'm a debt-first guy and then go out and pay things extra like this afterwards. I'd love to see us take that money, the reserves, and have the council pay down our debt to the PAC center that we owe, and we could get that paid off much quicker than waiting till, oh, I think it's 2028 till it paid or something like that. And we could get that paid off, and then I'm more open to, you know, spending some more money. Also think we have a number of other issues that that money could go for outside agency funding. And, you know, it was one that I, one that I think of. I did some research as well. I looked under the South Dakota Board of Regents graduate placement dashboard, and I logged in some criteria. I can tell you the criteria if you, if you want it. But what I found out is the numbers from 2015 to 2019, there were 12,839 graduates. Fifty-two point four percent were employed in South Dakota and forty-seven point six. We don't know where those folks are, if they're in South Dakota or whatnot. That number, especially when we're not requiring anybody to pay it back, that number's sort of high for me to give out money just to have somebody go to another state and work. And the sixth paragraph of the resolution, it states that the scholarship will target workforce needs. And I think you could all agree with me that in Brookings, we're manufacturing technical kind of cities throughout Brookings and, and the county. So, I mean, if you're going to give the money, I would say give it to technical colleges to, you know, to move forward. That would make more sense to me, I guess. That, I guess that's all I have. So I'll be, I'll be voting no on this unless there's some changes that can be made that make sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Collins. Do you?
I had just a couple of comments there. We've talked quite a bit about program. We want to get it started. And there's some issues there. We're talking about, well, are students going to leave Brookings or are they going to stay? For one thing for sure, if they're going to SDSU, they're staying. I mean, they're going to be here for that period of time. And, you know, any kind of program like this, you don't know where someone will end up ultimately, but if they have a good experience here, we give, we help some Brookings kids that might not be able to go otherwise to technical school or to SDSU. I think that's, that's a good thing. And the idea that we don't need people that graduate from SDSU in Brookings, I think is kind of a strange idea in that we have nursing students, we have pharmacy, we have all kinds of different majors that apply to things that we need in Brookings. You know, to say otherwise, I don't, I don't agree with that. I think, you know, we're going to have kids from Brookings, go to school in Brookings. Maybe they stay, maybe they have opportunities somewhere else, but that's not bad. You know, it's a, it's a deal that I just don't see the downside to this. It doesn't, you know, that some of the reason that we're hearing people be against it is how we presented it in the first place, I think. If you have, we often get a survey and it'll say, "Well, how would you like to have hundreds of thousands of dollars of your taxpayer dollars just wasted?" Well, of course, we're going to say no. So, you know, it's, it's a, you know, it's frustrating to me to, to have so many people just are want to be so they're so against this because we're going to give money to SDSU. Well, we're not. We're giving it to students. We're helping families. We're helping employers. So just don't talk to me about handing over great sums of money to SDSU. That's all I got.
Yes. As I had expected this matter to go to a study session, I did have a number of questions about administration of this and some help that I need to understand how this would actually solve the problem that we're maybe trying to solve here, which is workforce. And I will say that is SDSU a phenomenal institution? Yes. Are scholarships a phenomenally valuable vehicle to help with education? Yes. Those two things are not at issue in my mind. The question is, should one public entity be helping to fund another public entity? And so I have some questions, and maybe Mr. Malum could help answer some of these as well. I was interested, you know, for talking about the targeting of students that wouldn't make Brookings their first choice and then trying to convince some people. In my mind, that would be the, the reason to do something like this is could we create a net positive number of students that stay here? And as this is written right now, I don't see any evidence of how that would happen. I'm not sure how the mechanism would work to identify the individuals who wouldn't pick SDSU and to identify which high-needs occupations they're intending to go into. And of course, we all know how eighteen and nineteen-year-olds think. They think differently over those four years, right? So, so I have questions about that. Mr. Collins already noted the, the question about the residency requirements. I understand that's administratively cumbersome. I definitely do get that. But in my mind, again, it just goes back to what are we doing? How, how are we actually moving the needle here? And so I would like to know with an investment of eighty thousand dollars a year to the SDSU Foundation, approximately how many individuals would that help? What are, what are the dollar amounts that would be received by those students? And I'd have the same question for the twenty thousand dollars earmarked, earmarked to the technical schools. How many individuals are we talking about helping with this per year? Any answers on, does anybody have a note on that?
As far as the, the number of individuals, I, I can't tell you. Once again, this is a pilot program. If council doesn't see the
program. If council doesn't see the results within the first year, then you can discontinue it after the first year. You won't know until you, you try it. You know, there has been other peer college towns that have something similar. I've shared some of that information with council members. As you can see, based on that, what they've provided, tech colleges is something usually not considered, but there is a need here in this community. If you look at the numbers that was provided by SDSU Foundation, about 212 on average students graduate from Brookings High School. Of that, I think it showed 17%, 18% usually go to secondary or to a two-year college. If you break that down by those that are seeking education after high school, that's right around 21, 22%. And so I, I think you might see that ratio continue is, is my assumption. So whatever SDSU could provide, I, my assumption is something similar. But I do know that two-year colleges do have a program that's been in place for some time. I can't remember what it is. It's the, maybe South Dakota Challenge or something like that. And so they have a program out there that can parlay some of this money, my assumption, to make it even more stronger for, for our youth. But that's an assumption. Once again, we have not reached out to that entity to set this up. The intent is to see if there's council support for it before we spend more staff and resource on it. As far as using public funds, there is a precedence already set aside. Every year, city councils spends about $200,000 to the school system from the general fund for outside agency funding.
Another question I would have is, you know, I know that, that scholarships do require some administration to, to offer and to deliver. And would it be correct to assume that the foundation would be absorbing those administrative fees much like other scholarships? Would you be taking a percent for that? Okay. And I was also curious, because I've had a constituent reach out and ask, you know, if, if this council is desirous of moving forward with this. A couple of people have inquired about whether or not we would, we'd make any changes to the $50,000 a year that goes to the SDSU students. I'm not proposing that. I'm just saying that that's a question that's out there. I think that this is one of those issues that we all know that higher education costs are challenging for a lot of people, and it's a national problem. And I know we all want to do the best thing for our youth, and we all want to do the best thing for, for our communities. And this is a really hard one. Part of me just wants to, to warm and fuzzy this and say, absolutely yes, let's do this and let's make this happen. But I'm listening to my constituents, and I have to echo again what, what Councilmember Collins said. I have not heard from a single person to me that, that is in favor of this from the public standpoint. And in fact, in the conversations that I've had with people about it, it seems to be a clear, clear line in the sand for some people that they just don't think that that's an appropriate use of the city's funds at this time, or they would rather see us do something different with that money. When we had first talked about this in October, you know, again, I was thinking about if there's some opportunity for a match from other entities, if there's some, some ways to maximize this, and there's some ways to really show that we are taking it from here and we're moving it here. You know, we're going to have this amount of impact this year and this amount the next year and the next year. I understand it's a pilot. I would be more inclined to support. But this feels very fuzzy to me, and I just don't think it's something that I can support as written tonight.
Anybody else?
I would say that I plan to support this this evening, and really for three reasons. I see that this program will very likely have three positive impacts on our community. The first positive impact that I can see is that while ultimately, yes, dollars will feed into South Dakota State University and the technical schools, the real benefit here is going to Brookings County families and youth. As someone who myself benefited from receiving scholarships that made it possible for me to gain my higher education, I know how impactful that can be. And for some students, that can really determine whether or not they're able to even attend college. And so if we're even able to help a handful of our Brookings County students get a higher education, then I, I would see that as a win. Additionally, one of the other benefits that I see is that this program will help, at the very least, teach students in Brookings for their time while they're students here. Most students that I know, while they're attending SDSU, they, they aren't just students. They're also employees of many organizations within our community. And as I look around right now at the job market, and I see that some of our employers are fighting for a workforce, many of those jobs which could be held by college students, I think that this will at least help us keep some students in town while they're attending SDSU. Additionally, I would say that the third benefit here is going to be that in the end, I would anticipate we will see some of these students staying in Brookings. I, I, this community is a wonderful community. And even for those students that temporarily leave our community to attend one of the technical schools, I have no doubt some of those students will return to Brookings. We know that Brookings is a welcoming place and that people love to live here. And we even see that some students who attend university outside of the state tend to come back home. And the more welcoming and the more wonderful we can make this community be through programs like this scholarship fund, I see that that will just be another incentive and another way that we will help keep those students here post-graduation. So I really feel a lot of benefits to this program, and I plan to support it tonight.
Thank you, Holly. Nick, are you on now?
I am. Thank you, Mayor.
Please have any comments?
I just had a couple of quick notes. Yeah, I just had a couple of quick notes to share. I too intend to vote in, in favor of this scholarship program this evening. I do understand that there are some questions. I think that's the nature of a pilot program. I've had some questions about what implementation will look like. And I know that, you know, we could continue to try to hammer out those details in theory, but I don't want to let perfect get in the way of good. And I think this is a really good intentioned program with some real good potential positive outcomes. I think it has the potential to create access to post-secondary education for Brookings area students. I also think it has the potential to address some of our workforce shortages, both in technically skilled trades and those that require a bachelor's degree. I also think that this money really, over time, could be seen as seed money that encourages the private sector or the Economic Development Corporation or other partners to match the city's commitment to stretch the dollars and create more opportunity. And I think when we're able to do that, that's when we could start to build in the potential of a work requirement or other details. I think right now, it's important that we get the gears turning with this pilot effort. And I think the only way to do that is to vote in support this evening. And I just have to say that as I have conversations with constituents around this program, again, maybe to echo some of Wayne's sentiments, if I just posed a yes or no question with no additional context, they were lukewarm. But if I provided, provided some additional context and some examples about how programs of this nature have worked in our state or in other communities, folks, I think began to see the wisdom behind starting a pilot effort that could do some good locally. And so I, I have heard real support from constituents as I've deepened our conversations and provided some additional context around our thinking. And I think this pilot has the potential really to be a, a strong effort, both from a, a retention of young people and access to post-secondary education and a workforce development perspective. And those are all three things that, that really are central to, to our work as counselors. For those reasons, I'll be voting yes. Thanks.
Thank you, Nick. Patty, do you have any comments, questions? So before we put this up to vote, my comments would be as I'm obviously in favor of this. I've been in support of this from its initial thought process. I did have a discussion with Councilman Collins today about the racial. We may need to have more technical scholarships because of the need that we have in positions in our companies and, in, in our community. But also having discussions with, with our CFO from the hospital. He's in need of nursing students. I got an engineering wife. She said that we're short engineers in this town even. So it's kind of a, a broad range. I invite our community businesses and manufacturing firms to chime in on this and maybe help support this in the future if it looks like this works. I am definitely in favor of this. I will be voting for this also. And with that being said, please call the roll.
Avery?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
No.
Collins?
No.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne? Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell? Wendell?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Item 10C, action and resolution on 22006, authorizing the licensing of TK Cannabis LLC, DBA Prairie Grass, as a medical cannabis dispensary in the city of Brookings. Bonnie Foster, our city clerk, will review this item for us.
Mayor, council members, and public, a medical cannabis dispensary application has been received by the city from TK Cannabis LLC. They'll be doing business as Prairie Grass. Triffin Theodopolis is the application on this. This dispensary is to be located at 310 West 7th Street. Mr. Theodopolis is the owner of the property, and he is here tonight if the council has any questions for him. As per ordinance on record, the city council action is required to approve or deny this application. The city manager and staff have reviewed the application received and determined all requirements have been satisfied. An inspection of the facility, following remodeling, and prior to the opening of the business would be required. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Bonnie. Entertained a motion to approve.
It's moved to second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any public comment? Or would the owner like to bring up some, make some comments?
I appreciate the opportunity to approach.
Appreciate your name.
Oh, Triffin Theodopolis.
There you go. Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity to approach you tonight in regards to approving or, or seeking approval for medical cannabis dispensary license. I'm a lifelong resident of Brookings, and I see a need for something like this to be in, in the city limits. And I just, I would love to be involved and provide the necessary products for people that, that do benefit from it. And we, we do currently own the building that the property, own the property and the building that it sits on. So we have no issues with having to obtain the proper proposals and everything like that. So we are ready to, as we obtain licenses from the city and the state level, we are ready to start construction and, and have a building ready to operate in a short amount of time. So I open to any questions or comments from the, the council, mayor, or the audience.
So thank you, Triffin. I'd like to comment on this issue. Stay up here, Triffin, because I got a funny feeling we're going to have some questions. Close the public hearing, and, and do we have any council members that would like to make comments or questions? Councilmember Brink?
I just wanted to ask if you were at all concerned, the other application that we've approved, should there be two of these businesses in Brookings? Is that a concern for you at this time?
I, I think that there are going to be more than two in Brookings. With Watertown having, I believe, three, Sioux Falls having five, it's easy to draw somewhat of a conclusion where a possibility of applications or number of applications or functioning businesses within the city limits could fall. So I don't see any issues with, with having another, another entity be involved with this, so.
Any other questions or comments? Wayne?
Triffin, do you, is there a, a place or a organization where you get any kind of training or assistance and, on how to set up your business and what to look for?
They actually, I mean, it's gone as far as there are educational institutions that offer classes, as little as six-month programs in running facilities, the growing side. So the, all, all the different aspects involved in this business are covered by various institutions around the United States. So I don't have any, I don't hold any, I, I'm trying to, I, I don't hold any.
Is there a word, credentials?
Credentials, there you go. Yep. Sorry about the, the stutter there. But yeah, I do not hold any credentials that, that say that I am the, I should say model candidate for it. But I do, I, I have been in Brookings my entire life, and I do have, I do see a need for it. So I, I believe I can offer a benefit to the people who, in, in the community and outside of the community that will benefit from it. So.
Any comments, questions?
None for me.
None.
Okay. I have a question. What are the requirements for the security of these dispensaries? And I know Triffin may not know this answer, but Bonnie or Steve, can you help me out on that? I mean, are they required to have triple door locks? They have to put their product in a safe at night? I mean, it, this is a, I'm not going to say a volatile product, but a product that has some significant value to it.
Well, the state has administrative rules which set forth the security requirements. And then each applicant has also submitted a security plan. And this applicant has likewise submitted a security plan, which is very detailed. The city will inspect and make sure, not only inspect, but, but also review the security plan before its license. So we'll have a state review and a local review, make sure that there's adequate security. And then, of course, there's incentive for the operator of the facility to maintain the security of the product as well as, as the patrons' safety on the premises.
Thanks, Steve. Obviously, this is a learning process for all of us. If there's any, no other comments or questions, call the roll.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
Motion passes. Before we go to item 11, I'm going to give Patty the floor if she wants to make some announcements.
Mr. Mayor and fellow council members, it is with heavy heart that I am submitting my resignation from the Brookings City Council. It will be effective as of April 30th, 2022.
Are there any comments or? I was aware of this with a heavy heart, Patty. I appreciate the service that you've had for us. And I, and I know that we still have another good three and a half months to, to have you involved with our decision-making and, and part of our planning. You've been a very good council member. You've done a couple of wonderful things. One was the Housing Commission. That got us a good start. And hopefully, the fruits of your labor on that will show us what happens hopefully in the next couple of years. With that being said, item 11, city council member and deduction of topics for future discussion. Let's talk about the advanced agenda for next meeting, which is on the 25th. We obviously have a second reading. And there's going to be an induction of police department employees, recognition of city employees. We're going to have presentation of the Dr. Martin Luther King Contest Awards, an update from SwifteL Center. On the consent agenda, we got one liquor renewal. Second reading, besides our budget amendment, there is a public hearing in action on, that should, on placement of yield signs and stop signs. We need a first reading on it, don't we, Bonnie? Because it says something about just, that's on the second reading part.
Oh, that's just a typo. That's the advanced agenda. So that would be correct.
Okay. All right. And then First District is assisting us on an EDA resolution, potential grant. Paul will be presenting that. Besides that, is there anyone that would like to bring something on our agenda or bring to our attention? Please, Mr. Collins.
I would like us to discuss in our ordinances, section 22-374, which is occupancy limits. I was approached by Jonathan Sundet, who's an SDSU student, who would like to come in and visit with you about raising the occupancy from three to four in each resident. We also talked about how the parking was a big issue, but I'd like you to hear from him and what, what he has to say about some of those things.
Okay. So is that in form of a motion, or?
Why don't we?
Okay. Want to do it that way, Steve? Do we need to have a motion to, to even have it on discussion for?
Well, I think we should consider, you know, whether, I mean, that topic would probably take a fair amount of time.
Right.
Consider. So we'd need at least, I would say, a half an hour to an hour to consider that topic.
Okay. Let's, let's do a motion in a second and vote on it, just because we need to come up with a criteria so at least we've got an outlaying to go by and, for center of discussion then.
Okay. I'd like to make the motion then that we discussed 374 in our ordinances with a study session.
I'll second that. Any other? Holly, Nick, you got any questions or comments?
I do not.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Avery?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, anything else to bring forward? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.